This is a continuing series on winnowing our board goals and priorities. And Danny's gonna facilitate and lead us off this evening, but I just wanted to take a step back to our last meeting where we ended up through a fairly organic brainstorming process, kind of coming up with some loose ideas of priority areas that the senior leadership team has taken and is going to be presenting tonight in terms of more specific goals with measurable metrics. But I wanted to also just make sure that as a board, we all feel like we can have an open process tonight and that we want to have discussion on the specific rules that the staff is bringing us, but we also want to make sure that we're not, no one of us has anything that we feel is missing, or that's not quite right, or that doesn't capture, you know, the totality of the conversations that we've been having about this. And in service to making sure that we have a thorough process that really gives us to priorities that we want, we're gonna take a step back and lengthen our timeline a little bit. We had originally, you probably saw on the agenda tracker, contemplated that we would vote on goal, strategic goals at our next meeting, and we're gonna put that back partly also because, as the superintendent can mention before, we have a new director of system planning and performance, is that still what it's called?
Chief Assistant Performance.
Chief Assistant Performance, coming to start within the next two weeks, Joe?
August 15.
August 15. Dr. Russell Brown. And so, this is what he does, he's done it successfully in other school districts, we don't want to lose the benefit of his expertise as we land on our strategic goals and how we're gonna support, monitor them over time. So, we will, I think we agreed that we're not going to be voting on our goals until our September 10th meeting, but at each of our next two meetings between now and then, we're gonna be checking back in with them, different iterations, making sure that we really, we really are satisfied with where we went. Does that make sense to everybody? Yeah? All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Danny, who's going to walk us through, and I would just ask that we try to get through the staff presentation without a lot of substantive questions, just clarifying questions, and then we'll open it up for our discussion.
Real quick on the timeline, so you said September, you need now to adopt, and is that just to make sure we have enough time?
Yes, that we have enough time, yep. And that we have the benefit of Dr. Brown's, some dialogue with Dr. Brown after he, he'll be here to lead the discussion at our board meeting on the 27th.
And that's still early, half of the school year?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
For the district staff?
Yes, to line it out with the rest of our calendar and how we'll interoperate.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. So, like Chair Constim said, this is an opportunity for us to kind of continue the conversation, this time with the added pleasure of being able to talk with staff here who've done some thinking about some of your preliminary thinking. So, I think what we had planned for tonight was to kind of give you some time to kind of open up the discussion, start talking about your priorities in general, and so we'll spend a little bit of time doing that. Then we'll have folks from PPS, all of our great leaders at PPS, will go through kind of their, their sort of like best thinking on, in response to the goals that you kind of said you'd like to see some more work on. And then, I think we'll have an opportunity for some questions, some dialogue, to think about sort of like where should we continue to kind of drive that conversation forward, to get to your, to your goal of adopting board goals. So, what I'd love to do is just if you don't mind, start the conversation. We've spent a lot of time looking at data, reviewing the data, going through a lot of different exercises where you're starting to think in small groups and as a whole, about sort of like what's important to you as board members in terms of wanting to prioritize and wanting to see where there's going to be progress made over the next three years. And so, I kind of want to start the conversation with a light show. Thank you, Roseanne. There are no lasers though, unfortunately. So, I'd like to start the conversation just by asking each of you to do some thinking and to respond. In three years, you know, what are your priorities that you want to see, where you want to see the district in progress?
Oh, real-time conversation?
Oh, you're...
Student achievement.
Student achievement? Okay, what else?
Focus on our historically underserved students. Narrowing the gap, eliminating the gap.
Okay.
Keep going.
I'd like to talk, dial down a little bit more into the, this data. I'm just throwing it out there, because I'm seeing some, you know, drops of proficiency, some gains, and some of the gains are, you know, greater than what's suggested in Goal The language says that all student groups with proficiency levels below the average will reduce the gap by a quarter between the highest performing and the lowest, when in fact, it looks like we're, in some years, raising the scores higher than that, they're going, I don't know. Percentage points, 13.
So, I'm hearing that you want to, you want to dig deeper into the data to be able to make sure that the goals are having a corresponding story with the data.
That our goals match what we think we can achieve. When we see, we see some achievement in here numerically, and I'd like us to be courageous about the numbers and that we're using in the goal.
Okay. Other folks?
Ely, you were referring to Tom. So, I would like to have our students leave whatever grade they've just finished proficient and have mastered the content, so they're ready for the next grade, and that when they leave PPS, that they have actually mastered the content, which we think is important for them to be successful in either whatever their next step is, whether it's community college, private college, technical school, military, or career. But that we be real about what we think mastery is and what they need, and so that when they, those students either complete a grade or finish PPS, that we delivered a high quality education across the board. And, so the other thing I would want, did you say three years or five years?
Three years.
Three years. It is for us to acknowledge and devote significant resources, both human capital and also funds towards addressing the really significant achievement gaps that currently exist and make a lot of progress, because I think incremental progress, for me, is not satisfactory.
Can Ely ask, oh, sure, clarifying. Oh, did you have your comment first?
It's okay, you wanted a clarifying question?
I, was that racial achievement gap? Or just, I mean, we have some significant...
Well, the academy, especially the suburbs, English language learners, I mean, it's pretty valid across the board, and it's just average, isn't it? But, and also the suburbs, none of the suburbs are over 37% at that point.
Yep.
Ely, and then Amy?
So, I think we, it was really interesting from our World Cafe time to see that we all came, you know, unified around third grade reading, in the sense that we need to do better by, especially our students who can start with the numbers, or that we know, like the data shows right here, that we are not doing what we need to for certain groups of students, and I think we've got that priority very clear. I think one of the pieces for me in three years is those other parts that a school is about, that academics are obviously primary, but how do we use leadership development, and how do we help students with their own sort of internal development? And I think our goal around the positive, confident, and connected sense of self that uses this statistical school survey aligns with that, like our students are more whole and connected within themselves. And I'd like us to see a little bit more leading edge on how we are holding ourselves accountable to developing leadership. Again, we, we want all students to succeed at the highest levels, and I'm a firm believer that people's brains work differently, and for some students, those sort of, their multiple intelligences around like being able to work with people and be a leader, and maybe, hey, math isn't their strongest suit. So, how are we creating a system that lifts up and provides training for those students who have those skill sets?
Amy? Another thing that's really important to me, where I can see some system shifts for us in the next three years, and that's not reflected in this set of proposed goals, is really readiness to learn for kindergarten, and especially if we're gonna have additional resources there under the Student Success Act, because we know that we have huge disparities that show up in kindergarten, based on what type of, you know, access to early childhood education people have had, it's very inequitable across our city. And so, one of the things that I think is interesting about the potential for focusing on that is that it could involve us really pressuring and activating some of our partners, it wouldn't just be about our own internal metrics, but really, how do we lead our city in, in supporting this as a, as a priority for, for our youngest kids? So, I'd like to have more discussion about that.
Okay. Rhea and Scott, if you can quiet?
So, some shared metrics with some of our system partners? Okay, partners, because I've been bossed. I think that would be great. I don't know that we can get there at this point, partially because I don't know that we can get there, and I'm pretty sure they can't get there. But I think this is something that we ought to be talking about in the next year or two, because so much of what we are being held responsible, responsible for, is only partially under our control. And we need to share some accountability with other systems. Second, I want to, second what Amy was talking about, and this, this is what occurred to me as you were talking. So, we spent, what, four or five days at Hobbin, talking about...
Where, where's that looking?
It said Hobbin Yacht. Actually, it wasn't at Hobbin, but it was across the street from Hobbin, anyway. So, they spent a lot of time talking about, you gotta know your theory of change. And I, I don't think we have articulate, I don't think anybody here has articulated that yet. I, I think, I think we think we know what it is, but it would be good to know that I know what it is. And I'm not sure we have universal consensus around what the theory of action is or should be. So, for example, I'm gonna throw out that I, this, I'm gonna say something, and it's not to the exclusion of any other, but I think the ability of students', you know, social emotional capabilities has an enormous impact on a kid's ability to learn. And if we go with that as a theory of change, then we probably have a very different set of metrics. If we go with another theory of change, but, you know, I'm, I'm gonna guess it's something along the lines of, you know, a highly qualified teacher who's well, I don't know, there's a standard theory of change that everybody talks about, you know, a good teacher in front of a classroom is gonna do good things for kids. That's a very crude way of putting it, but I, so that leads to a very different set of metrics. So, I, I'm kind of eager to find out what, what our theory of change is, because I think that's, that could have a big impact on what we choose as goals and metrics.
Scott? And then Andrew, I'm gonna come back to you, and then I'm gonna go to you, Michelle.
So, I'm gonna throw out two, not necessarily contradictory things. One is, I keep coming back around to the idea of any additional resources we get, we throw K through three, or maybe K through five. And we just say, we're gonna do this, and that doesn't mean we ignore anything else. We keep, we keep, at least as a board and what we evaluate the superintendent on this side. How much can we throw at this, figure out not only our theory of change, but what seems to work in different settings, because different things will work better over here and better over there, and that ought to be our focus. And that's being as upstream as we can, and actually pre-K, I would say. And it would include mental health services and all the MTSS we can do to support our kids, as well as really consider on curriculum, you know, really solid curriculum adoption, and giving our teachers time to, you know, observe each other, which is again, another set of, I find, something to try, and just really, really do the K5 and really figure that out. The second piece is, again, look, I've got the graduate portrait over here. Critical thinkers, problem-solving, transformative leaders. If we, if we really focus on those, then kids are gonna learn, because it's going to be really relevant in doing learning. And if we, I had this conversation with our superintendent, I, it's not that anything here is terrible, but it's underwhelming, and it's something that, that could have been goals written 20 years ago in this district under NCLD, test score, test score, test score, test score, test score. And it's not anywhere near the aspiration that I think we need to see reflected in our goals. And again, the board goals are a subset of all the broader actions going on, in terms of what we put those on.
Andrew?
Well, I'll just, I mean, I, yeah, I agree with what most people said, and I would kind of go back to some of the earlier work sessions. For me, three years from now, I want to see dramatic increases in achievement, student achievement, and particularly the students who are most underserved in the district. So dramatic that, that people notice, and that, that begins that positive cycle of trust in the district, that people can see the positive impacts, they have more faith in the district, there's stronger support.
Thank you. So, Michelle, you had your hand up, and then Julia?
Oh, yeah, I wanted to, thank you for bringing up that theory of change, because that would be a really great conversation to have, because I don't know, I don't feel like we, I have a good understanding of what our, as a district, what our theory of change is, but we also learned about starting from question zero, what our question zero is, and I don't even have a good sense of that either. Or I don't even know if we would be in agreement on what that is, so I think it would be helpful to have some conversation about that, because we probably all have goals in mind. I don't, I don't know that I necessarily see my goals reflected in the document.
Okay. So, Julia?
So, I'm just gonna offer a contrarian one, Amy. I appreciate the staff putting this together, because I think it is an iteration of what we talked about, and it's moving us closer to where, that wasn't the contrarian part. I know my staff is like, okay, that wasn't the contrarian part. The contrarian part is, I actually believe, like, if we say we're gonna get 100% of kids, students with disabilities, Black men, American students, Latino students, all read, and, you know, and all the sectors that are really, really low, like, that is super aspirational, and to me, like, we would accomplish an incredible thing. So, I don't find these dry at all. It appears apparent for the student who's not achieving, I think they would expect before we went to the next thing, that we would be providing students with the fundamentals in order to be successful at the next level. On the theory of change, well, I'm curious as well, who's better, but I believe that our responsibility was to set the goals, and that the superintendent and the staff, the educators, are to develop the theory of change. The board's role may be to pressure test it somewhere, to ask the sort of questions of inquiry, but it really, that, I don't feel equipped to, to know what the strategy is, or what the right theory of change would be to get all kids benchmarked in fifth grade mathematics, or whatever the other benchmarks are. So, I think talking about the theory of change, I mean, it would be a super interesting conversation, but I think our job is to set the goals. Staff will come back, and then we can, again, pressure test it, ask questions, but I, I believe that's more the role of the educators and the superintendent of the district, and then if we, if we agree on, based on the pressure testing, that the theory of change and the theory of action is right, then it's our responsibility as a board to support the resources that fund those strategies and that theory, just...
Okay. So, I'm gonna press pause for one moment, okay? So, I want to acknowledge the tension, right? You are going to want to, to have a really expansive conversation, and kind of go over the floor over here, go over the floor over here, and I want us to start to coalesce around some ideas, okay? So, I just want to acknowledge that tension in the room, okay? Number two, I want to take a moment and pause for a moment, and to kind of just, kind of tell you what I think I'm hearing, because I'm seeing sort of like three circles of discussion, all right? So, before we move on to the presentation, I think I wanted, for you, what I'm hearing is that there is some energy, we're just calling this energy, right? It's just energy, there is some energy around sort of discussing, there is some energy around a priority around student achievement, right? And there's, there, and sort of like what that looks like, what the measures, what the growth arc is, I think we, I want to ask you some more questions around sort of like, if you had to pick, say, for example, Julia, you mentioned student achievement at every grade, but if I was really being this, that you have to pick what you think is the most important grade. What is your personal priority? I want to do that. The second bucket has, is around this idea of what are those dispositions, those mindsets, the, the things that are important for students to potentially accelerate their learning? Is it leadership development? Is it social emotional learning? What, if I were to ask you, Ely, like, what do you think? You've talked a little bit about leadership development, but if you had to choose, is it leadership development, is it going deeper into critical thinking, is it greater, going deeper into, you know, a connected sense of self, what would be your priority? So, that's that second circle, okay? And then, there is this, this third circle around what's, what's the right, how, how are you going to calibrate? What is achievable, knowing that you're, you don't get to pick everything, and you are absolutely accountable to the public as elected bodies, and you have experts around the table who are going to develop that theory of change and resulting strategies there, so how are you gonna calibrate, like, the right aspirations? Like, what, what does that look like? And so, a question for you to discuss is, you know, how, how are you going to do that, right? Like, if you are going to develop the strategies, we're, we're gonna stress test them together, we're gonna communicate about them, but if you are the one doing that, how do you, how do you sort of like know that the right curve of growth sort of meets your aspirations as, as people, as elected officials accountable to the public, if you want the best thing for our students? Okay? So, those are three circles. So, what I'm gonna ask you to do, if you don't mind, we can come back to anything outside of those three circles, but if you have any thoughts about those three circles. So, the first circle is around student achievement. What, what grade level, what, what measure is the most important to you?
Third grade.
The second, the second, the second circle is around, like, what are those other dispositions that are important to you that will, that will support and enhance student achievement? And then that third one is like, how are you, what are your thoughts about calibrating? Like, what the, what the goal is, okay? So, I'm gonna hold us to these three circles, just for another five to 10 more minutes before we hear the staff presentation, just to help us start to, to see, see where there might be some, some common energy. All right, so does anyone have something that they would want to respond to in any of those circles? Andrew?
Just starting on the last one, I'm gonna start sort of higher level performance management, you know, theory, but, I mean, in terms of the right aspirations, right, it's, it's staff's job to tell us what they can achieve with current resources, it's the board's job, board's job to decide if that is enough, and if it's not, figuring out what the additional resources are. Additional resources can be additional resources from the state, which we're gonna be getting, or it can be realigning resources within, you know, within PPS in terms of achieving those. But I think that's, that's the goal, and I think we are gonna have a tension, because, you know, I think, I don't disagree with Scott on like these goals a lot, just to, just to, you know, preface that, but, you know, they're not, they're not, they're not gonna blow anybody out of the water, because we are in such crisis that, you know, a 10% point increase is actually pretty dramatic, you know, given, given where we are. But, but if that's not enough, then we need to have that conversation in terms of where to get those resources. But I think, you know, we, we want to, it's, it's, it's common sense, it's something we read about cases, you know, you know, back in Holland about this. You want to set a goal, I didn't say anything, yeah, you want to set goals that are, that are stretch goals, but they are still... The other thing I would say, these are also three-year goals, right, to 2022, that you can, you can adjust. And so, sometimes we get a little caught up in, in sort of like, oh, I, you know, that's, I want to lower, I want to raise it, but the reality is every year, we should be adjusting what the goal is. If we make really good progress in year one, we're gonna, you know, if we make it harder, if we're not making progress, we're gonna come back and revisit and figure out what we can achieve.
Amy?
So, I, I think I want to go to the intersection of student achievement and calibration, say that, you know, I, I do find these inspiring, because we cannot ignore them, and they're so necessary, but I think that when we talk about social emotional learning, and we talk about the disposition of learners, that is so embedded in the strategies that our educators have around how to raise student achievement, that it's not either or. So, that when we focus on these maybe slightly boring, very concrete student achievement goals, it also captures so much about what do these little human beings, or sometimes big human beings, need in order to be able to achieve, and what kind of investments are we making in, you know, who they are and how they learn? So, I, I don't see those as divorced from one another at all.
So, I really like four of the cycles, and I think we hit the nail on the head with third grade reading and fifth grade math, we really did a lot of that in our workshopping, and I think those are our priorities for sort of that academic achievement. I think that high school readiness is very important, and, and we had talked at the last board session about how we were spending a lot in, in elementary, and Amy, Julia, about that, because one I really would like to change, and really think about more deeply, is that college and career ready, and that for me goes to that sense of leadership, like, instead of having that be another test score, is there a better way in the PSAT to, to see if our students are ready to lead in the world? And again, PSAT goes back to sort of academic achievement, and I, I think, again, we have students who have lots of wisdom and knowledge, and how are we building that leadership piece so they can go out and be leaders in the world? And then I'm less interested in how they're doing on a, I think, a college preparatory test, because that, I think that the PSAT really weights us towards a sense of college track, and I think leadership is a bigger notion than just, are they ready for college?
Scott?
So, I'm gonna agree with what Amy pointed out, is that I don't think there's a contradiction between the basic skills and talking about leadership development or critical thinking. And I, and that's, like it or not, we're talking about theory of change. And part of my theory of change is that the more we get into different ways of teaching than drill and kill, which, which, I don't know, I, I know that's not where staff was coming from, but, but I just felt like, I'm like I remember back in 2002, reading those and looking at the test book piece, that if we almost get away from test scores, we'll end up with better teaching and better... almost get away from test scores, we'll end up with better teachings and better results in some ways. I also totally agree that the PSAT doesn't do it for me. And in particular, there's nothing, none of these measures have anything to do with writing. The writing on the PSAT is multiple guest editing, it's not writing. There's no writing sample, is, am I correct on that? And writing to me is where critical thinking really gets exercised. Um, plus it's a hugely important skill, and as a community college teacher, I just like, even like, I guess the one I see the, the quality of my, the quality that comes out of it too often. And that's in there.
I think this is a good segue before we get into too much critique or wonder about the specific goals. Why don't we actually hear from our educators about how they arrived at these goals?
Okay, any, but hold on, just any other comments really quickly?
I, yes, I agree that the PSAT is not necessarily the best measure of, of, of college and career readiness.
But the, but the priority of college and career readiness, I think you guys are wanting to find different measures. Okay, Rita and then Julia?
So, um, so a couple of people have said that, um, you know, there's, there's, there's not necessarily a contradiction between, you know, going to test scores and, and the way, the kind of teaching that we expect from our teachers. So here's my concern. Um, that's an assumption. And what is counted counts. And, um, I, I am a little worried about, let me make this a general statement. One of the dangers of having metrics is, um, if you don't have a balanced set of metrics, you could have perverse incentives. And that's what NCLB was all about, you know, pervert. All that mattered was a couple of points on, on a test score, and boom, you're, you know, you were either good or you sucked. Um, and I don't expect that we're gonna be there, that's not what I'm saying. Um, on the other hand, um, if, if you have a discreet set of measures that are very, very heavily related to test scores, and that's for sure, you know, and the intention behind having these, these metrics is to kind of drive what's going on in the district, well then where are we driving to? And, um, and I'm not saying, you know, there is some value in test scores, but there's also some value in the rest of life. Um, and, so I just, there you go.
Okay, your shot, and then Julia.
I'm done.
You're done? Julia, did you have a comment?
Yeah, sorry. So this was a good iteration from our earlier conversation. And I don't think it's necessarily a logical conclusion that this is driving towards test scores. I think they're, um, open us to other ways, and this is the, having a new system's performance, that there are other ways that we can gauge mastery. I guess I, having been a parent of a student who didn't achieve any of these goals, I think, to me, like, I think that's what parents expect of a system to do. So if you take a moment away, like, how we're gonna measure it, whether it's a test or something else, I think we still have an obligation to meet these goals. And so if we're gonna just argue about the measurement, maybe that's the wrong argument. But the, the bigger question seems to be like, are, do we agree with the goal? And then we can talk about how we measure it, and in reverse engineer out the perverse incentives. Um, but we shouldn't not, um, get kids to mastery, or to see if they're, you know, or deep in our systems, doing what, um, we'd hope for our, for our own kids, um, just because we don't like the suggested measurement tool or the current measurement tool. Um, so I think we can suspend, like, a commitment to what the measurement is, and at the same time embrace the goal.
I mean, right now, the system has a implied default that moving from one grade level to the next is mastery. And parents sort of assume that, and we know that that's, that's not at all true.
It's a cruel joke on our students and their parents, because they don't often figure it out until they get to high school, and they're so far behind.
Yeah, and, and I'm dealing with, with this right now. Like, what am I gonna do with my PPS graduate that, that has not mastered any, anything? You know, what type of occupational therapy are we looking at? So, you know, I, I guess I'm saying I agree. I, the metrics, we can, I feel like we can discuss the metrics, but I'm also wanting to dial down into, into the goals as well.
Well, that is a nice segue. Um, so what we're gonna do is, um, I'm gonna be cool and unusual and ask you to, um, hold your questions. So if you ask you, even if you have a question, even if it's a burning question, and Scott, you're so close to Brenda, it'd be so easy for you just to turn and say, but what does that mean? But I'm gonna ask you, please don't do that. Um, we're gonna go ahead and get through the whole presentation and write your questions down, and then we'll go goal by goal, because I think what we wanted to commit to you is to offer some time for some dialogue, because, you know, we heard that you wanted to iterate through this process. We do want to allow some time for dialogue. But we do want to give folks just an opportunity to sit, so that you can hear from them, uh, as you're, as you're listening, uh, where sort of words were coming from. And if you'll recall, they saw your seven, uh, seven areas that you kind of focused on, and then were asked to refine based on sort of like what their expertise and experience and what they, what they think might be responsive, while also doing this with their own, um, experience. So, uh, Superintendent Guerrero is gonna kick us off.
Good evening, I appreciate the, uh, the conversation. Uh, I think when we started to construct this slide deck for tonight's, we had draft, because we were iterating every time we had a moment to actually talk about, uh, what we heard in the last work session, which, you know, if you remember all the charting and all the different conversations, and kind of like I just heard right now, uh, we, we haven't quite yet landed on, what do we think is most critically important, uh, for us to measure our progress, uh, over the next few years? We can say it, it's, it's helping us to become a more successful school system. Uh, and I think that's, that's what we're wrestling with. So, uh, we listened carefully, we took a lot of notes, uh, we did our homework on coming back, uh, refined sort of, these are the areas we heard you talk about. We've tried to substitute some proxies for what measures could look like. Uh, we've tried to come up with some reasonableness in those being smart attainable goals, while still being a challenge to, to achieve. Uh, and of course, the rate of acceleration depends on available capacity and, and resources. And even as we've kept talking, even this afternoon, uh, we are even noticing our numbers are fluctuated. And I know there were some, some, some recent questions for, for more data on some of these areas. And we apologize, but we've been a little busy planning for hundreds of administrators this week. Uh, and our institute, we want to come back to you with this next iteration. So I'm glad that we're gonna keep talking about it every week, and we'll have time to keep doing this. Important thing is the variety consensus and variety goals, that, that we can all agree on. Uh, these pictures are there by accident. This is a snapshot of, uh, from the All-Stars Celebration that we had at the end of the school year. Uh, students of color who were recognized across different grade levels for demonstrating excellence in different ways. Uh, they were recommended by, uh, their teachers, uh, because of some demonstration of, of good work. And what we owe their families is some transparent way, uh, to, to, uh, from an accountability standpoint, that in fact, they, they are ready to be successful when they leave for the public schools. And I hear, some of that tension here is, then what does that look like? Uh, what we, what we, I, I know, agree on is that right now, we're not serving them effectively, uh, in most cases. Uh, we have, uh, two-thirds of our high school kids who don't feel like they belong in their high schools. We have 40% of our third graders who aren't reading in grade level. Uh, we have only 10% of our black students, uh, achieving proficiently in mathematics. Those run itself already, and I don't think anybody, uh, would disagree about those, and so we want to do better. Uh, we, we have had a working sort of theory of action, uh, because of the state in which we found the school. Uh, the symptoms of these outcomes are what you get, when there is a curriculum and instructural framework, when there is an assessment, when there isn't continuous improvement, when there isn't leadership development, when there isn't social emotional support, when all those things, uh, that we've tried to attend to in the last 20 months, uh, to, to build that foundation, to then jettison, ask them to go deeper into some of that work. A theory of action is, uh, we, we look something like, when you pay attention to the academic needs of our students via a rigorous standards-based curriculum, an instruction that is differentiated, assessment that tells us how students are learning and how we adjust our practice, combined with meeting their social emotional needs, and develop the professional capacity of educators and leaders to engage in continuous improvement, we can expect to see some of the results for our kids. So it's something like that.
That's why I'm.
And we would make that, we, there is a benefit to sort of how we go about our workday. Uh, and we would refine that in a way that, that the public could recite. Uh, but I wanted to take us back to the graduate portrait, because the community just defined what, what outcomes they're seeking. We're not gonna look it up, we can't substitute for that. And what they've said, these are the different skill sets. And you recall in some of the icons, some of those were about poor knowledge. Uh, and so they do include some academic proficiency that people expect, that can read, write, and compute, uh, among other things, uh, that I think are also important, that they're able to articulate their thinking, that they're able to present an artistic piece, uh, that they're able to collaborate in teams and communicate. All those things are important. What I appreciate about our vision, which you didn't get a hard copy of the glossy that's out now. Jonathan, do we have copies around? We'll, we'll make sure you get those. Uh, the issue that we also identified, you can't produce those kinds of students unless you have the kinds of adults that actually have an understanding of that and themselves are modeling it. So we also have to make some shifts ourselves as a school system to do that as well. So, um, I, I think we all agree that we want to measure our success against sort of, uh, what's been articulated here. Um, so we tried to take what might look like traditional academic milestones. You'll find them in almost any, the least school district around, page three, five, eight, nine, 12, uh, milestones. But we tried to match them, and sort of, where do they fit in the wheel of a graduate portrait? Is it balanced enough? There was a, a lively conversation around, how do we, a little bit more of some of those other areas that we think are more forward-thinking for our students. Uh, we heard the board for the landing manual, a sense of belonging, and sort of play around with that. What would that look like? How do you measure that? Um, and then we, we also sort of struggled with, some of these goals are, are kind of compound statements. Uh, where do you break them down? Uh, and for each of them, we wanted an overall sort of proficiency rate, but we know that we have student groups that need to show a lot more acceleration, and we need to narrow that opportunity gap, so we have to be more aggressive about those goals. So you see place over statements around reducing by some number, but what we want to do is actually give you the end sides, and give you the specific number by which, uh, the specific student group would improve over time. So that would be our next iteration, is you would see some will at one age would be exceeding, for example, the talks about that. Uh, we also struggled with, you know, what are some well-rounded ways to talk about college and career readiness? So, uh, you'll hear a little bit about that, uh, as we get into the conversation right here. So, so the staff will, will run through each of these five, we had them. Uh, we knew they weren't perfect yet, but we thought they were the next sort of draft of what they could, uh, look like. Uh, we've tried to be tempered, but also a little bit assertive about what we're, what we're aiming for and the way it results. Uh, I know our chief of system performance, Dr. Russ Brown, you know, who's as raggedy here as we speak, from across the country, and he's in like Wyoming right now. Uh, he's very concerned about, you know, how audacious can we be? Because there, there's just no evidence around the country, uh, you know, of, of what rate of acceleration you could expect, even if you marshal all your efforts. Uh, and so we, we, we do want to be thoughtful about what those numbers look like over time. So, uh, staff are gonna go through each of these one at a time at a high level, and then we'll, we'll jump back into the conversation. So Dr. Norrie?
Yes, hi, good evening everyone. So, the first, the first goal focuses on third grade reading. And as, as it's prefaced, it suggests that every third grade student will be reading at grade level by the end of the third grade year, as measured by the Oregon State Assessment System. In this case, it would be the, uh, Smarter Balance Assessment. Um, but we also have looked at, as interim assessment, the MAP Assessment. So looking at those two as possible markers for the progress of our third grade students. And using those, that, that, the Smarter Balance Assessment, it would be looking at students improving from 58% in 1718 to 67% by 2022, which is three-year trajectory. In addition, students that, which goes to some of the comments that, that were made, that in addition, students, um, with a proficiency level below the average will reduce the gap by a quarter, or 25%, between the highest performing and the lowest performing student groups. And so as indicators, if you go, if you go to your slide number six, one of the things that it shows is where our students are, which you've already commented on, the variance that exists among our student subgroups. Um, and as well as the, the trends, the three-year trends that sort of, uh, helped us articulate the number 58, um, which has from 15, uh, 2015 to 2017, and the fact that it has, within those three years, fluctuated up and down, right? Uh, under Smarter Balanced, and Smarter Balance Assessment. And then we also looked at the demographic groups that would be impacted by the goal that, that you have set. And so there are questions for ourselves, as the superintendent indicated, that we ask ourselves around, whether, as we look at third grade as that benchmark in reading, whether we are actually identifying and looking at the right numbers, or the, the right percentages, whether we're looking at how we're going to provide interim measures towards progress and growth to achieve that. Um, and so, and so, and the fact that if you are in that subgroup that is not meeting the, the average, that your scale is a little steeper, but you have the scale is a little steeper. So those are questions that we ourselves as a staff have been asking ourselves around goal number one.
Number two?
So goal number two, you remember the discussion first started around kind of fifth grade fractions, because fifth grade was where fractions achieve mastery. Um, and in looking at different metrics, um, it became clear that, um, taking a look at fifth grade math, proficiency in fifth grade math as an overarching was going to be more successful. Um, and so, um, so it just shifted slightly to fifth grade mathematics for the goal. Uh, and so the percentage of fifth grade students who demonstrate proficiency in mathematics as measured by the Oregon State Assessment will improve from 48% in 2018 to 15, 57% in 2022. Um, and that all student groups with proficiency below average will reduce the gap. And so similar to the previous one, that our, our students that are performing below average are, are going to, um, start to close that, um, that gap. Um, and so if we look in terms of the metrics, um, our baseline data is coming from the Smarter Balanced Assessment. Uh, if you guys, you'll notice that our baseline data is 48% proficiency, but as you look at the subgroups, the numbers are significantly lower. Um, our white students are performing at 60% proficiency, and so that's, that's what's bringing the 48% up. And so really looking at the numbers of our subgroups and, and what an indicator of increasing by a quarter would mean, and so really taking a deep look at, um, how do we achieve those, how do we achieve that as a goal? And, and is that, um, how, will that be reasonable numerically, um, given, given where some of our students are, are starting out? Um, and then the interim measure, both the Smarter Balance Assessment, but also, um, growth on the MAP Assessment, uh, because growth on MAP can actually help us look not only at, um, like, what are the concepts a student knows, but actually how much are they growing, achieving across the school year? And are they achieving more than one grade level of growth? Because that's what we need to start to close that gap. And so the MAP will actually give us data to let us know, are we on track, um, in pulling that together? Um, as you'll notice, for, um, fifth grade math, the numbers actually, 2015, it was at 50, then it went down to 47, and then back up to 48. Um, so, so kind of a, a growth trend isn't really there. Um, and so kind of really, really trying to, to figure out how, how, you know, kind of significant changes to, to be made to support our students. Um, and then again, the demographics, all fifth grade students with a special focus on, um, on our student subpopulations.
Number three?
Goal number three is focusing on high school readiness. Again, this is the third component of the three goals, is focusing on the, um, the inquisitive critical thinking, deep core knowledge that's in our, our student graduate profile. critical thinking, deep core knowledge that's in our student graduate profile. The idea behind this goal is really making sure that we have high school readiness, a deep understanding of cross-core content, and displayed readiness in both reading and the analytical abilities to go into high school. The goal specifically reads, the percentage of eighth graders ready to enter high school is measured by proficiency in both English, or English language and math, are measured by the Oregon State Assessment System, to improve from 47% in 2018 to 56% in 2022. All student groups with proficiency below the average will reduce the gap by a quarter between the highest performance and the lowest performing student groups. Very similar language to what you've heard before, but this, this one, this particular goal is actually focusing on combining the two, the two core emphasis in math and language arts. And so when you, when you go on to slide 10, much of the baseline data is also horrible when you begin to look at just how poorly we're performing in some of our subgroups. Again, we're able to use some of these tools here to measure and monitor our progress in an interim way, but when you look at the data that shows the growth trend, just like Professor, Dr. Davis just shared here, you look at the trend and it's going down. And that, that percentage of 46.7% is math and ELA, all students who are able to display proficiency in both subject matters. Okay, so, so our focus in goal three is trying to highlight a balance in those skills and get that number of students that is proficient in both of those to raise by 9% over the next three years.
Number four.
Great. Hi, everyone. I don't know if I've met everyone, but I'm laboratory with college and career readiness, and I wasn't here for the last conversation, so I just wanted to introduce myself. And so for goal number four, as we talked about, how we'll measure college and career readiness, we aligned it to the graduate portrait and the idea that we want all students to leave as lifelong learners and looking for that next step in their personal development. And as we looked at what that meant, we also want to expand the traditional idea of college to include apprenticeships, trade schools, two-year or four-year options. So as we say college, I think oftentimes our mental model goes directly to a four-year, and to recognize that there's, as lifelong learners, there's lots of opportunities after high school. And so we landed on the PSAT, and I want to talk a little bit about why, in the high school, there's very few common assessments that all students take. And the PSAT we offer to every 10th grader. And the other common assessments that are available at the high school level is our algebra students take the MAP exam, our 10th grade students take the PSAT and the SBAK, and then our 11th grade students in the past have taken the ACT, but we're moving to the SAT. So as we're looking for baseline data, we would not have that for the SAT that we're moving forward to. So, and when we looked at the percentage of students who participate in each of those exams, the highest percentage, which is at 85%, is the PSAT. So that is how we landed at the PSAT. And we put as our goal that we would like to improve the college and career readiness measured by the PSAT, which is scoring a 430 on the reading and writing section and a 480 on the math section, by 48% in 2018, to the three-year goal to 57% in 2020, and additionally increasing the proficiency of our students below the average by a quarter for the lowest performing student groups. And so you also have the data available in this handout that, so the next slide talks about the benchmark proficiency, as well as a breakdown, you have the breakdown by our different subpopulations, as well as by school, on the next page. And then, as we discussed, the type of progress monitors, we could consider our ninth grade on-track rates, we could consider that 10th grade SBAK, we could also consider that algebra MAP as interim benchmarks to progress monitor for, for that.
All right. Goal five. Good evening. Goal five is sense of belonging. And so we really wanted to focus on how students are feeling that belonging in school, how students are building those relationships, having those clear connections, and feeling safe and supportive in schools. So using the Successful School Survey, which was a baseline this year, what we want to do is we want to improve it by three percentage points each year, total of nine percentage points, going from 63 to 69%. And then we had discussed the sixth through 12th grade. I, I think we need to discuss the 52% in 2022, going from 34% to 52% is probably a really high and unrealistic jump, but we can certainly talk about that a little bit more. Some, if you go to slide 14, the metrics we would want to measure and the baseline data that we have taken is in four areas. One is through our Successful School Survey, another one is through training for trauma-informed practices, the third one is our social emotional learning curriculum in our school's K5, and then our fourth one is our school office discipline referrals, specifically with our K2 students. Currently, the students that are third grade are in third, fifth, seventh, and 10th. So some of the interim measures that we'd want to prioritize really is around that training pieces, primarily around trauma-informed practices, implementing our SEL, so our social emotional learning curriculum, school-wide, so it's not by classroom or by teacher, but it really has to be the whole school community that buys in and adopts the SEL curriculum and partners with parents to, to make sure that that is successful. And then the other thing would be to make sure that our principals are trained in our new student discipline policy, our updated office discipline referrals, and really it talks about that trauma-informed and that supportive approach that we are moving towards in PPS, and how we're supporting students and helping them make even those decisions and helping them learn from their mistakes, as opposed to it being more of a punitive focus. So some of the data that would support our growth would be, some outputs would be the increase in number of employees that are trained in trauma-informed practices, and the implementation of our SEL curriculum in our K5, our school climate results, and then the reduction of our office discipline referrals.
So you see here in this case, sort of this suggested, actually capacity building metrics, not so much doing, start to move into sort of strategy part of it. So I mentioned some of these notes and trying to arrive at articulating these goal areas. A lot of the goal metric has to do with what the historical trend has been. That doesn't mean, and I'm certainly going to be the last person to ever say publicly, that I would be happy with a one percentage point gain, even if that's been a very historical trend and sometimes backwards. And it also depends on, you know, if there's a regard on these goals, what is the political will for how aggressive we get about the strategies to renew a faster. And so that, so that would require also a careful shift in how we articulate those strategies to get the substantive progress that we want to see. There was mention of K readiness. We didn't have K readiness in there. I am very familiar with developing K readiness, but that's only one I control for every four-year-old in the city. So it's hard to be held accountable for students. I'm not actually providing services to, it's an important baseline to have, so we know where it begins to implement strategies early on. This is the challenge when you have a myriad of providers, and in some cases where students aren't even accessing them. So we're hopeful that the emphasis on early education coming up as success means we'll certainly give kids more access to high-quality early ed, and certainly our team and I have been involved in what's known as preschool task force for all, so we're very much in that conversation. This is just for your reference, this was sort of the first iteration on July 2nd that the board came up with, there were seven in that case. And then also as another note, I only directed the staff to work on the areas that we heard you discussed. I didn't say to the staff, if you could design a goal area that captured some essence of the graduate portrait, what would it be? And that would probably be an interesting exercise, because now I've heard enough of it, where we're kind of grappling with what would it look like, and maybe that would be a good brainstorm for not just the folks around this table, but everybody back on the farm to really kind of explore that. Well, okay, let's get creative about that, and maybe that would, if we had a little license to do that, we could maybe come back with a suggestion. So.
Or can you reveal whether there are any glaring omissions?
As far as capturing some of those attributes, I mean, I think, I think board members have mentioned some of the ones that we would think are important, too. I believe it's when students have a developing sense of agency and self-efficacy, they can go far, right? And so how do we develop that? Because that's, that's transferable across all the content area, and that looks different in age-appropriate ways across K12. And so you can see it in first graders, you can see it in 11th graders, but then we would design a very different kind of assessment for that, right? It wouldn't be test-driven, it would be demonstration-driven, right? You see this happening in some pretty innovative school settings, where folks at the end of the year will have to sort of demonstrate before a panel of peers and educators how they've mastered this concept, in whatever way they did that, and it leaves it much more fluid, but that there's some kind of a rubric that's holistic for doing that. Now that would require sort of building it and institutionalizing it and capturing it for every student in the school district, and that's certainly something we could choose to do. I'm just suggesting that we, there is a way to get very creative about it while still ensuring that some standards-based competencies are met. Okay, to our students.
Thank you very much. They did a great job, didn't they? I think they did a great job. For some folks, this is like hour 14. So I think they did an especially great job, even, even if it was hour 14.
And before we go on, I have to, I would be remiss if I didn't thank and appreciate throughout this process, Joe Suck's here, he's been almost a one-man band.
Thank you for that.
He and his teammates have really done their best to sort of satisfy our requirements, and while there's data literacy among senior leadership, it still requires folks who can access our data sets and help refine those with us. So thanks, Joe. And he's, I'm sure, thankful to have a partner in crime.
All right. So for the purpose, I say about the notes, you're ready, you're ready. So here's one of the proposals that we do, the way that we kind of take these questions. So let's go back to goal one, and if you, I don't know where the clicker is, so we go back to goal one, let's talk.
Can we go back to page two?
Okay, hold, okay, hold on. So before we get to that, we'll go goal by goal, we'll ask you questions for clarification. So just like, oh, what does this mean, or what's the question for clarification? We'll get out what you like about the goal, we'll start with like appreciative, create an appreciative space, and then we'll sort of just get your impressions about like, oh, it's like, you know, thumbs up, that's, okay? Does that sound like a good process? And we'll go two, three, four, and five.
No, I just want to say on page two, it says the word lead.
Supposed to be led.
No, like that, like as a leader, prepared to lead, I'm, I'm leading my people.
Yeah. Where does it say that?
On page two.
Prepared to lead.
I'd be prepared to lead. I'm more especially this way.
Okay. Yes. That is Stacy for that, for that note. We then, I just have a second. No, 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 it's possible. Hold on, I'm sorry.
Is that synonymous with SBAK?
Some, somewhat.
Two of the two.
Well, it's the Oregon State Assessment System, because for math and language arts, this is the Smarter Balance Assessment, but for science, it is OAKS, and for English language learners, it's ALPA-21. And so they're, rather than calling them all a bunch of different things, it's the Oregon State Assessment System.
All right. So I, I, I just said, like, somebody start with goal one, we'll start with goal five, because Brenda is, has to be here very early tomorrow morning, so she would have to be a little bit.
Nice. We can go backwards.
Yeah. We may, we may. So, so. Okay, so, questions for clarification. Joe, any questions for clarification right now, goal five? Questions for clarification?
So for goal five, the indicators are around trauma and discipline.
Indicators are.
The, not that the interim measures were around staff training, around trauma, SEL, and discipline.
Yes.
And those, I would agree, in terms of a theory of change, those are all things that would influence, do I feel like I belong? Am I, some of our students who don't feel like they belong are dealing with trauma. Some are dealing with discipline issues, some are trying to figure, even if they're not being disciplined, their mental health is, whatever it's going to be. I think that's a subset of kids who don't feel like they belong. Other determinants of that, lack of belongingness, that's, we can work on.
I agree. I think there are. I think that talking about our K5 schools, building our social emotional capacity, and also building that relational trust with a caring adult for students, for all students, is very important. Once you start doing that, once we start building and increasing the capacity of our adults to, to be comfortable and feel confident and have additional tools in their toolbox, to be able to come to a common form place, to be able to teach pro-social behavior, we're also addressing our racial equity and our social justice, because we're having, teachers meet students where they are instead of where the teachers believe that they should be. And so by, by, by yielding all of these things within our teachers and tools in their tool bag, we will actually build that community and that sense of belonging. So, so yes.
Kind of like a, that's one of the racial equity issues in our graduate portrait.
Can I ask a clarifying question? On the goal five metrics on slide 14, write a note where it's listed with demographic groups that are impacted, school office discipline referrals have a disproportionate impact on lack of around students.
Correct.
Do you feel like that teacher training will then reduce, reduce those, reduce those incidents, the number of incidents, or?
That is a multi-pronged answer, because there are many different things that we need to do in order to reduce disproportionality, and that's a national issue.
Yeah.
And so, and we could take all night talking about that, but I do believe that this is a great starting point, and to continue to work on our racial equity and our social justice lens, providing that training and that ongoing support for our teachers and our staff, teaching them how to be trauma-informed in their practices, and then also giving them the tools to help build those relationships and that social emotional capacity within our youngest children, so that they end up growing to become caring, compassionate adults. We have to do that, but we also have to provide support. So our administrators, when they're there, and we do have students who are, who are making some, some choices that we're hoping that they could dominate. So we need to not only provide that, that natural consequence sometimes for those behaviors, but also do it in a caring and supportive way, so that when we do. but also do it in a caring and supportive way, so that when we do know that students are making some decisions based on either trauma, addiction, mental health, or, or needing some additional guidance, that we're there to provide that support and that education as well. So it's really, it's, it's very complex, but I think starting to do some of this work will help to the way of that. Scott, did you want to clarify?
Yeah. Yeah, so again, theory of change, how I feel relates to whether I feel like I belong. What I do, I think, also matters. So if we're looking at curriculum and how we engage children in the learning process, and we talk about kids taking responsibility for their learning, how we teach, I think, also can impact, I'm gonna say there's a chunk of those, 40% of the kids who feel like they don't belong, not all of them are traumatized, some of them are wallflowers, you know, they're there, but they're not there fully engaged.
Yeah, they're bored.
So it, so, so I, so I think you're, the interim indicators are good, and I think there's others, other things that need to be teased out to really respond to this.
Well, and I think, I mean, you guys had asked if there was anything different. I mean, if we wanted to add some pieces, I mean, multi-tier systems of support is, is a huge and paramount endeavor that we are doing in Portland Public Schools. And so that also is part of it. Scott, is the, is the system of support academically as well as behaviorally? Because you're right, some people don't, some students don't feel a sense of belonging because academically they're either bored, or they're challenged too much, and we're not hitting that sweet spot where we can provide that, that level of support academically and behaviorally. So, so we can certainly, you know, discuss that.
Okay, any question?
Well, just has to be a clarifying question, but isn't this the free-for-all for Brenda's ocean and go home?
Well, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, if you don't mind, we can move into, are there things that you, that you find compelling about this? Positive, positive feedback we can give to Brenda about this goal and to the team?
What are you changing, what? Is that, that way?
Yes. Do you have a question?
I have.
Okay.
So, I'm wondering why the interim measures would be adult measures versus student measures? Because we're not measuring the strategy, we should be measuring whether the strategies are impacting students. Whatever, whatever measure that is, it's got to be raised in a couple of ways, but I'm just, so, my question would be, why have we looked at that way? Because it's getting off of our focus on, doesn't mean that we're not going to do all these things as the way to change things, but if we do all these things, what is it going to bring, does it change?
Their inputs.
Yes.
And my, my last one is really a stretch on clarifying question.
Well, let's see.
It is, because, so there was some judgment made on what ended up on the list of five. And if I, we're looking at this, I have something else I'd rather add than this, and so at what point in the discussion would we, like, there, there's these, these things that have been proposed, but is there something else that we would rather have been there?
I think that's a clarifying question.
So, because I would replace this with something.
Oh, but hold on, I'll tell you when. So we're gonna, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna, we're gonna let, we're gonna let Brenda answer the question. We're gonna go through, kind of like a lightning round, like, what do you like, is there anything that you like that's compelling about this? And then we're just gonna go one more round and just sort of say, you know, what's your general sense? Do you like this goal? Should we, you know, and that'll be a chance for you to say, you know, ah, we've changed this. So, did you have a clarifying question?
After we go through that.
Okay, let's, let's have Brenda answer the first clarifying question, then Rita have another clarifying question, then we'll do round two, which is what is compelling, what do you like, and then sort of your general opinion. So Brenda, quest, uh, so question.
Yeah. So, so these are soft skills, so it's really hard to measure soft skills of students, it's not the same as taking a test to see if, if they have measured some sort of proficiency in reading. So before we're able to start measuring those soft skills, we have to build, build that relationship with teachers. So the first way that we do that, because we haven't done a lot of this work yet, we're only SEL in 12 schools. So, so we have a ways to go. So, so in order to prioritize this, we do have to do those inputs first before we can start looking at the outputs of measurements of students. And so we're really at that.
Because otherwise you're measuring a condition that you have no way of knowing whether or not it has any correlation to any of the activities that may or may not be in place to influence it.
Right, right. We haven't done some of those since first, and while I don't like setting goals based on just inputs alone, I want to see the fruits of my labor, we actually have to build this one first.
But that's gonna be true for every one of our strategies. I mean, in theory, if only 19% of black kids are reading in third grade, it implies that we have, we're lacking in strategies and some things that adults aren't yet doing and that aren't happening. So, I guess, I would say, so how would, it should be, it should be measured and done, but it's just, I'm not sure that's the interim measure we want to tell them, you know, this is why we think we're getting a better sense of.
Right. I mean, we, we do have two outputs currently, and one is the reduction of the office discipline for referrals and increase of the sense of belonging for the successful school survey. So there are two, so we have two and two. We have two inputs and then we have two outputs right now. What I would like to see in three years' time is to be measuring maybe one additional input and then three or four outputs. Currently, we haven't identified those yet, except for in our successful school survey, which is just our first year in our baseline, and then through our office discipline referrals. As we implement our SEL, there are some other additional, some surveys and some ways in which we can measure the way students are, are feeling or students are interacting with other students and things like that, but we, we're, we're not there yet. We've just did our first year of school-wide implementation this year, so we won't be able to have that until the fall.
Rita, did you have a clarifying question?
Yeah, I have a question about the survey.
Okay.
So, is this an annual survey or?
Yes.
Okay. And why only third grade, seventh and 10th grades? Is that, is that like a model for the survey, or is that a decision of state?
It's the interim.
It's, yeah, interim, sorry. Those are the four that we had decided before I got here over, you know, a while ago. What we are doing next year is we're including two more grades, so that we'll have two surveys per K-5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. So we're adding two more. It's, it's costly, so we, we do have a, we do have a cost.
Do every grade? Okay, so it's driven by. Can we get some information about how much it would cost to do every school, I mean?
Every grade.
Every grade, yeah.
Including?
Well, every grade and every school, right. I, I, I mean.
I'm happy to do that.
Give me the number for what it costs doing what we're doing now, what it costs would be additional two grades, and then what it would cost for the whole shit.
Would kindergarteners be able to take the survey?
We have a K-2 band, so it would be a much different measure.
We've also been, we're trying to be a little balanced about surveying and test time and, you know, how that assessment calendar looks across grade levels, so we're not saturating our students.
Yeah, but I can certainly get the prices.
Okay, so let's open it up, oh, Scott, another, another clarifying question?
Assume the, the SEL curriculum has some kind of student assessment on it.
There are some, there's some, it's not really assessments, but you do get some end of, they're not chapters, but end of unit, almost like premium post-assessment information. It's more fluid than that, but yes, we will have that.
Okay, is that, again, you're only doing that at the, those schools, but is that something that would serve as?
We'll start, we'll, we'll start doing that this coming year. So for those 12 schools, we will start with the assessment pieces. We're adding seven schools this year, so this year will be that first introduction, and then next year we'll be rolling in those seven schools. So by, so by this time next year, we'll be able to assess them to these schools. So, and then hopefully we'll be adding more. So yes.
All right, so let's go through anything that you like about this goal that is compelling, things, and that everyone has to answer, but things that you find compelling about the goal. Goal number five.
I think it's vital to student help that they feel connected in the school day, and I think those, the questions that you shared with us last time about what the survey asks are key to sort of how students show up in the space, so that they are ready to learn. And I think we see a lot of academic fallout when there is not that sense of belonging or connection or school to place for me. So I think this is a vital goal, and I really appreciate that, that the data you've done and that idea of like, I know the nine percent for the little ones and the 18% growth for the older ones, but I think that that's, as we talk about like, mental health for our older kids, that that's a really important indicator and to intervene there. Thank you.
I think that to have fidelity to our vision that the community has brought forward, it's really important for us to have a goal that focuses primarily on social emotional talent. This does that.
Yeah.
I, I am, I do have a little bit of question around the issue that Scott brought up, which is that there are so many different factors and conditions that contribute to a sense of belonging, so it's not, it's not measuring or looking at, at one thing, but I can't really think of an alternative social-emotional metric that would be as sort of widely relevant that would be more narrowly focused like that.
Because it just requires that everybody join marching bands, and then they.
Band geek.
100% of band geek, and I am the right group for it.
Okay, uh, I think it's compelling, because we can move on to just your final thoughts on the goals. Just any, it can be positive or negative, or it could also be things that you'd like to see at, at our next conversation. So I'll open it up, questions, continued questions, things you'd like to see, kind of your final thoughts, thumbs up?
It's a great goal.
Great goal.
It's a great goal.
Maybe, we'll just go down the line, do you mind?
Yeah, I know. I have some other questions, but I think it's a great goal.
I think it's a great goal also. I'm, I question, I wonder if, under the interim measure, interim measure to progress monitor, interim measure to progress monitor?
Measures.
It should say measures. Okay, measures. Is there, you know, increasing the staff of, increasing the staff of color in schools? I, is that, is that impacting?
We're getting into strategies and implementation measures. We, we need to have student outcome interim measures, so there's a few proxies in there.
I think it's a great goal. I, I like that, things I'd like to say, I think it's a great goal as well. Things I'd like to see is maybe a few more creative staffs at some student-centered metrics.
So I think it's a good goal, whether it would be, just to place myself in the, I'm just wondering whether it's in my top five with, and I guess I wonder right now how, like, I sometimes fill out surveys, well, I know how I filled out surveys when I was a student. And so I wonder about the validity of a written survey to capture, capture that. And I also wonder whether at the end of the day, when I see what the other goals are, whether I would still have this as one of our top goals. Not that, not that we're not gonna, there's all sorts of other things that's gonna happen, be happening in the district, but whether this would be sort of on the four primary and four eighth grade rules, five, ten year goals. So that's what I would, may depend on what happens.
Okay.
My favorite goal of the class, yes.
Favorite, okay.
If we're gonna like have favorite.
I agree with a lot of what Julia said, although I'm a bit more bullish on it, but again, that doesn't mean, that wouldn't mean that, that would make my top five. So, again, we have not been a comprehensive goal exploration, we've been an exercise, we have kind of a staff responding to that exercise, but we did not do a, we have not done a comprehensive look at, here's our vision, what are possible goal areas, not even looking at the, the metric part of the goal, we're just looking at goal areas that would get, potentially not to complicate that expression.
Okay, well, you'll have a chance to kind of, to kind of, even tonight, to kind of talk about sort of like where you might see some clear areas. All right, let's move on to the next goal. Do you guys want to stay, you want to stay at the sort of college and career space, or do you want to go down to the third grade babies? Third grade babies? Okay, let's go to third grade, let's go to the first goal, number one.
They would be so offended that you called them babies.
Yeah.
The babies. They're big third graders.
I know, they are. Okay, so goal one, questions, thank you Brenda.
Thank you.
Questions for goal number one, third grade. Scott?
Question for Andrew.
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 She's a director, she's got points at U.S.
I'm fine with that, actually. I want to, I think I understand the math, but I just want to make sure that I do. So reducing the lowest performing, using the gap by quarter, your highest performing and lowest performing. So for instance, if the gap is 40 points, 40 percentage points, if by the end of the third year, it will be a 30 percentage point gap.
I am terrified to do math in public.
Yeah, I mean, that's my understanding.
Is there a joke?
I don't understand how the gap is defined.
Quarter of the gap. Right, so if it's a 40-point gap by the end of three years, it'll be a 30-point.
I think we want to put that in numbers, so it doesn't.
No, no, and actually, the reason why I was asking is because, because I, I, it gets back to one of, one of Scott's early points about whether these are compelling, and if I did the math right, it's really interesting, like, on this goal in particular, the math is different in all of them. If we go from 58 to 67, right, and, and our black third graders are at 19, we're starting with a 39-point gap, and we would end after three years at 67 and 38, which is a 29-point gap, which means that actually overall achievement would increase by 15%, which is significant, but black student achievement would increase by, by 100% or double. And so it really does, so 15% is kind of like eh, you know, whatever, but then like doubling, even though 30-year black students are reading, you know, proficiently, is actually a really dramatic goal. But I just wanted to make sure I understood.
That is.
And we will need to work a little bit, I think Julia might have said this in an earlier feedback, we will need to work a little bit on, on the messaging, right? Because, because it just, yeah, just how do you, how do we really quickly, not even elevator speech, but like, someone's closing in on your face speech, like, how do you get across what this goal is? And the dramatic impact if we're successful.
Yeah, it's just, so this was work that, that language about sort of cutting the gap in, by a quarter, was work that he has done with Russell Brown, I want to call him Gus, Russell Brown, and so that was his, his suggestion, was to sort of do that as a way to kind of basically do, do what you described as sort of accelerating the sort of like achievement for underserved students, students of color. So, thank you for that.
And again, how, how we, how we frame, because, because saying, oh, we're only going to reduce the gap by a quarter, so we might say, wow, by only by a quarter, double the number of black students we can affect. Can I ask one more, and this is a larger question, Scott, before we get into a little bit of a loop, am I right that, well, I actually, is, is the district, we're, we're picking out here the, the sort of key performance metrics that the district's gonna focus on for the next three years. I'm assuming the district already has, or maybe when the new guy gets here from Wyoming, or. or that you're finishing this, that, that are, do we, are we, do you have an entire, or you have plans for an entire performance management system where all the things that you're talking about, including all these alternative goals that people might like, are still going to be tracked? There's still gonna be something that you're doing. These are just the goals that we're fo, that we've agreed we're focusing on because we want some progress on.
So, a few things. One, there is a state accountability system, that's how we're officially held accountable, our schools and our district. So we have to satisfy those targets regardless of what we said. We do wanna move towards being a performance management oriented school district. We wanna have not just school-based performance metrics that are articulated in our school improvement plans, which is exactly what they're working on right now, that identifies their gaps and what strategies they're gonna do at the local level to move those student groups forward in accelerated ways and how we're gonna support them to do that, which we think on average will contribute up to the goals that we wanna set. But we also wanna have APIs for every central office department that measures how they're actually being effective in supporting our school communities. All of that should roll up, and we got a little taste of this, we do a scorecard, where you would see across a lot of domains what our targets are, and you would just see highlighted sort of the big five board goals, or we would have others.
Yeah. And I just wanna, I just, I think that's important as, as we talk about all these, our, our decision today, or over the next few weeks, is, is are these the five that we want to focus time, resources, effort on? But it doesn't mean that all the other goals that are important, that we think are really cool, that we actually also wanna just keep an eye on, aren't necessarily gonna be tracked. I think they will, maybe you haven't developed it yet, but over the next few years, as you develop this system, we will get that data, we'll be able to track it, we'll be able to dive into the system to find it. This is really a priority setting exercise, not, not exclusive.
That depends on the resources we have to marshal. If the board says African-American math proficiency is number one, there are specific strategies to move the needle in that. And so what are we gonna let go of to really move in an aggressive way in that area?
Right, but I would hope that on the other, the other metrics you have, you don't let go of the data tracking.
No.
You're not focused on those as much, you're not developing strategies around them, but, but it would be good to know if one of those all of a sudden plummeted, then oh, wait a minute, that had an unintended consequence. So I, I would just hope that as you develop, and it's gonna take time. Again, I don't know the current state of the system, but as you, it's gonna take time. But I just, I wanna make sure we don't get too caught up in, well, if I don't have my measure on these five, it still may exist and be something that you could ask for as a board now, just to sort of track progress, it's just not where we're focusing our potential resources.
And also not public facing, a public facing priority so much. But also, we've committed to be part of the data cohort for the council of great city schools on the key performance indicators that they have identified and that other districts participate in, which applies to also what you said, financial indicators and central office, so that we can benchmark ourselves against other larger school districts too, so that's.
It's just a healthy way to operate a school district. So, we're gonna be tracking who's reading it, who isn't regardless of whether it's a goal or not.
Julia, Lee and, Ailee and Scott, not Andrew.
So I, I sent my questions in advance, but I don't think we can really have a conversation on, I can't participate in the conversation without more data. And I think it's gonna be really important that we have that data in a way also that the community can understand it, so if you, I don't know, we've got the clicker. But the, if you go to the next slide. So for example, the basic data, the fact that we don't have white students in there, so you see where it is?
You can't tell by the order of what.
Right, so.
Unless you can be really smart about figuring it out with the overall proficiency.
What slide are you looking on? If the slide is right there. Okay, so then, the other thing I think that we need that's critical is the number of students in each of these subgroups. So, so how many students is that? And then, so if you have a total number, and then what the, what the subgroup, so it'd be important to take the Latino students at thirty-four percent. So if there's a, how many third grade Latino students? Two thousand?
Five hundred and fifty.
So thirty-four percent is how many students, but I think having a, like get out of the numbers, how many students are reading, are we talking about, for each of the subgroups? And then, if you weren't, if you weren't good at story problems, which I wasn't, I don't think the, the goal, and I don't have an issue necessarily with the goal per se, but I don't think it will mean anything to the community the way it's written, because it's, it's a story.
You have to do math.
It was a, was a story problem without any numbers in it. And so, what I think would be helpful is you use the data, run out the story problem, and begins without judgment whether a quarter of the highest and lowest of the gap is the right one, but you, you take that for, say, ELL students. So what, what does that mean in terms of percentage and also growth that we expect? And then also the number of actual students? Because I think the community will say, this doesn't mean anything, like we don't know if that's aggressive, whether it's like, kind of an easy thing to meet. So I think a lot more specificity. And then.
Julia, stop me for a second though, tonight I just have a clarifying question.
Is that, I mean, we're talking about messaging, which I think is really important, but is that important for you deciding whether this is a valid goal or not?
It, it is, because I don't, I don't know whether one quarter of the gap between the highest and the lowest needs anything.
What I know that we wanna see is.
But how would happen the wrong numbers, I mean?
Because then you could actually see what it meant, like is it four percent? You just said something in your head, and so it means some logical thing to you? Okay, but our, but our community is not gonna do that.
No, 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 well, so again, I'm not disagreeing with you at all as we communicate this, right? And I think I said something similar to that, but I'm, I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out in terms of, the math is gonna be different. The math is gonna be different for every group, because they're starting in different places.
Exactly.
But so, but what I hear you saying, and I just wanna make sure I understand it, is that you're not comfortable deciding whether it's, it's an appropriate goal without, without seeing those numbers. I'm just wondering, will those numbers change?
They, they will, because what I, what I heard, at least in the small groups I would just stated in, that people wanted to focus on like groups that are, that are achievement levels. So if we're doing one quarter for each of them, I mean, I think even all of us will immediately have to go out of the community at some point and defend these numbers. And if we're gonna shift resources, we're definitely gonna have to defend that we think these are the right numbers, we think it, like we didn't set the bar too low.
So, but, so I'm gonna jump into this one, because I, I wanna come back to this one for just, for just one moment, because I just wanna get, so it sounds like for clarification, you wanted to, to get some information and that we didn't get it to you, yeah, but we're, we're good in it. But that, but it sounds, gee, is there a question that you have for this group right now though?
Well, I guess, it's a question like, what am I gonna give data? And then I actually have another question that came up in, in this, it's sort of like, the question, will we also get the data on white students? Because I think that's.
That's worth, I agree.
And then, just a quick down, is you look at these trends, say for example, if, if we don't have it disaggregated, maybe, say if it's slightly trending up, maybe it's because actually we're getting large growth rates in whites, non-framed reduced lunch students. We're actually.
That's a bigger percentage of our student population by year.
Right, and so the trend is going up, and yet we're actually flat with the subgroups.
That's why we have two goals, a better and a huge goal.
They're gonna disaggregate, right?
Yeah, well, but honestly, this is.
Okay. I'm gonna, so I, I hear that the data's important to you, I'm going to, if you don't mind, move to Elee and Scott and then.
Ailee.
Ailee, gosh, I'm so sorry.
It's not a case of age.
Just kick me, I'm so sorry about that. Ailee and then Scott. Okay, so.
It is, it's a clarifying statement.
I promise you, you can come back to that.
The exhaustion's coming.
Barbara just improved.
You can come back to that, because we do our things. Okay, Ailee and then Scott, clarifying question.
What would be helpful for me, this is not a clarifying question, it's an ask, is that baseline data, what would it look like if we like met that goal? So we say we're gonna reduce it by a quarter, so let's say we hit that nine percent increase in three years by 2022, so then what would it look like for our black African-American students in 2022?
On each one.
On each one, if you could do the math for us, so then we can say, oh yeah, we're doubling the number of black students that are reading on grade the whole, we are tripling the number of whatever.
And so that we could also see it as a projection in terms of actually numbers of students.
That was my question, I mean, that's.
So that's what I was trying to say in my opening remark, is that's what we would do for, is quantify.
I think this is really important, actually. And what we're talking about is, is how we communicate it, whether we set the goals appropriately, but that's different than the metric itself. So what I really would like to hear from all of you is, do you like the metric?
Yes.
And then we can talk about, are we aggressive enough on the goals? Are we too aggressive, you know, how do we disaggregate? But I'm, I, that's what I'm hearing, but I haven't heard you explain on whether the goal is, I'm sorry, whether the metric itself is.
I don't know, because like, and I challenge you to ask most parents in the district, what, what this goal means for an individual student or a sub group? Because it's, it's one quarter of the, I mean, there's the.
Can, can I say, I think Andrew's question is, are you okay with having third grade reading?
Oh, well, yeah, well.
Because that's the most important thing that we need to decide, because these goals are totally adjustable as we go through the next three years.
The metrics, the metrics are adjustable.
Everything is not title your, yes, I'm fine with it, but the devil's in the details.
Totally, so, so remember I talked about the tension, how I wanna move us there? So I think that we, we understand that you need more information and to be able to even sort of talk about the, for the goal, we wanna see what that close by a quarter is? We could get that for you, we just couldn't get it for you tonight, we'll get it for you soon. Scott?
I'm actually guessing that you can't get it for us, because my guessing that the highest subgroup is Asian-Americans.
Say, what do you mean by the highest subgroup?
Well, we're, the, the metric says close the gap between.
The highest and lowest.
Highest and lowest.
Why, why?
Why is higher than Asian-Americans?
Okay, third grade reading. Even, even take, take white.
Fifth grade.
What if we implement programs that you're talking about, really focus on African-American kids, and those strategies happen to work really well for a lot of kids? And so, that, whatever that gap, even though we get spectacular increases in achievement, we're not meeting the closing of the gap. I'm just saying, that's a possibility.
But that's a strategy.
Well, I think if we have all kids achieving, we can pat ourselves on the back and, I mean, I, I think that's less of a.
I'm just saying that's, no, but that's, but.
And then we'll say, but according to our metric, we can.
Okay, this is helpful.
So, so I, I would like to see the metric, the.
Some examples of like what that looks like.
I just wanna caution us, because as we're getting mired into questions about the metrics, I wanna get back to Guadalupe's point about the A in SMART tools, it's not for us to determine the metrics, because we wanna be realistic, we, we need to have achievable goals. So even though it might be painful to set a goal that seems too low, I need to be able to trust that we are setting the highest goals that are reasonable relative to the tools that we have to attack them. And, and I don't, I don't wanna be in the business of trying to look more aspirational than is reasonable and, than set goals that we know are not likely.
Okay, so I'm gonna move us along, so let's go sort of final thoughts about the goal. So knowing that we're, we're gonna have to go a little bit deeper on data, so you'd be able to fully inform and understand the implications of this, are there any other thoughts, not relating to the data, that you have about this, this goal that you would want us to sort of come back with? We, we, we have heard about needing more data and information, but if there's any other sort of follow-ups or just your final verdict, why don't we go down the line and we'll start at this end with Scott.
Okay, so, so yeah, I'm, I'm told that this would be my number one. Hands down.
Is it your favorite?
It's my favorite, it's my number one, it's the one I feel closest to. However, you wanna.
You have it read, sorry Scott.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, and one other thing about the metric piece, the four academic metrics are, did you make it over the bar? And we know in the past in classrooms that is meant, oh, you've made it over the bar, and so I can just kind of let you go through the rest of the year because you haven't made it. And my, my bar is still, and I don't know how to assess it, is trying to get everybody at their highest potential. And doing the, oh, you made it over this bar, you know, I think is gonna lead to some kids not feeling like they're belonging because they're not getting their needs met.
We don't have anything in here about progress. Individual progress for all.
That's.
I, I think the statement about individual progress for all is a vital one, but I think this is, I mean, I think there's clarity on the board that this was one of the goals that came up again and again in our world campaign and our conversation, so I think it's one of the most vital, it's my third favorite. Because I like math.
All right?
So it's my favorite. And of course, a question I would have, is there another measurement, and this, this is just a inquisitive, not a statement that I think there is something else, but just inquisitive, is there another measurement other than S-FAC that is, you know, can tell us whether our students are mastering what they need to, and do. So that would be my question, and then my only thing about, is my favorite, but I, it was my favorite when we also had like greater focus. Because what I'm afraid is like, we're gonna do the average, like move everything up the average, and when we look at some of the numbers, I think we need to, we laser focus in on a couple of subgroups versus, I mean, right now we have a metric that is the same for all the subgroups. And so, and I guess when we just get to, that is not. Well, it's, it's gonna be, there's gonna be a proportionate depending on what it is, but I, I guess this is why I also wanna see what the number is, because I think there's going, there's going to be a question at a certain point when we get the resources with, if you want to move this subgroup x more, you could do it with additional resources. And so I guess the question is, is it a quarter?
Right.
And I know the quarters is gonna be different for each.
And I'm right, and I'm right there with you on the resource assessment question.
Thank you. Any final thoughts? Anything to add about this goal?
Love of reading.
Reading, you know, how many books do you read on your own, or I mean, you know, those qualitative like love of reading.
It's, is in my top two favorites. I would also like to see more specificity about those growth rates, like being intentional about those subgroups, that's that disaggregation piece. I'd also like to see some additional data to help us be more intentional. And, and yeah, I'm, I'm good with the conversation as it is.
Okay.
So I think in my head, what I'm, what I'm thinking now is, I'm gonna separate out the goal from the metric. So I think the goal is spot on. I think we have to have it. We don't have to worry. For the metric. I think it's reasonable, I'm, I'm gonna have to defer, I don't, it's, you know, I'm not an educator, so I don't know what's achievable and what's not, so I don't wanna substitute my fanciful notion about stuff. What I am concerned about with the metric is, S-FAC is not really actionable. So it, it comes so late in the game, and it's once a year.
So it, it comes so late in the game, and it's once a year after the fact. It doesn't, it, it doesn't give you any opportunity to course correct if things are not going in the direction you want. So I would like more information about pro, actionable progress measures, so that you can see if what you're doing is actually working.
Which we actually have in place?
We have math.
Good.
Scott?
Andrew, Andrew.
Okay.
Now you're second guess.
I know. Okay, I want to just do a quick touch.
There are a lot of much more precise instruments for assessing reading behavior. We don't have the expertise in DPS to develop. We could, but that's five to seven years worth of work. We could deploy a platoon of reading specialists to do that. We, we could gauge students' progress along a reading continuum, which is very easy, versus an S-FACT, some of it. But that's, you all would have to be pretty okay with focusing on next, probably one or two goals versus five to seven, if you really want to do that work.
So can I make a request? I mean, that's the kind of information that I think we need. Because that is going to have resource implications.
Big time.
So, I mean, I would like to know what the options are, because I don't know.
And maybe we want to throw out a couple of goals and.
Or maybe we want to, maybe you want to choose subgroups and keep it to one at each, because the, the, the resource constraints and the capacity building that will need to happen for ELs in one content area versus fed students in that same content area, or, or a more culturally responsive student group, are they going to be different? There's some universal practices, but to differentiate, that's a unique expertise to teach.
So just when we were looking at doing our exercise in our last work session, and looking at, well, how much, what's the percentage increase that, you know, really good districts have been able to do, and we all went, oh, crap. You know, third grade reading is fundamental. So.
Reading is fundamental.
I'm good to go down to two goals or three, you know, reading them.
It's back to reading, writing, math.
I'm, I'm not adverse, you know, I really like to have that conversation.
All right. So it's, I'm going to just do a quick touch back. So it is nine p.m. We have three more goals to discuss. And so I'm going to keep us plugging away. So let's go, it, it's, that's okay with everyone? I think it's, we probably need to get through these goals, and then we can sort of talk about, coming back to you at the next, the next meeting with some more discussion. So let's go to goal number two, which is the math, the fifth grade math. Questions for clarifica, so let's do this. We'll just do questions for clarification and then final verdict. So if it's your opinion, or if you want, if you just don't mind saving that for the next round. But questions for clarification.
You'll love to that.
Yeah. Questions for, oh, no.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm fine with it, with the same constraints that we talked about.
Me too.
Are there any questions for clarification? All right, so for, final verdict, you were thinking, fine with it, but you want to have similar conversations, okay? Anyone else have?
So the same, similar, want the same data setup? And then also the same question about the, the measurement tool.
My second favorite goal, because I feel like math needs a champion.
You want to be the math in the band?
I want to be the math in the band and the leadership champion. I'm kind of like spreading myself everywhere.
I'm, I'm a big fan of math as well.
Why?
All right. Andrew, was your luck at work, your thumbs up? Any questions? Okay. Strange, strange how we've gotten a little bit too far. Okay, so goal number three is high school readiness. So this is proficiency in math and ELI in eighth grade. So questions for clarification? Julia?
It's fine, I, if on the data request? It's my understanding that this is, you have to be proficient in both in order to hit the number. And I think it might be, I'm wondering if it'd be worthwhile if we got a sense of somehow the mix. Like, you know, we actually could have, you know, seventy percent, but it's just, you know, we're dying in math, you know, I don't know what it is. But I'm just wondering if there's sort of two things we're putting together artif, not artificially, because I think that's the sum, whether you're ready for high school. But it might tell us more, we, I'm wondering if it might tell us more if we had it separately.
I, I think, I mean, I agree, I think we need to see that, but I like the idea that it's actually focused on the individual kid. Like, are you ready? Not like, are you strong in one area and maybe weak in another? But you're going to have to continue on both these pathways in high school. So are you as an individual well prepared? I like it, because it's focused on our individual kid.
I'm just, quick question about methods, how, how that number is, or that readiness number is calculated? Are they tested in English, tested in math? And then what happens?
It's, it's what it is, is, yes, they test in two different areas. And they either, they either display proficiency in one or, those, those students that are on that have displayed proficiency in both areas.
Okay, okay, so these numbers, so it says black, African American, nine percent, only nine percent compared to like Native American, or thirty-nine percent.
Right. Do you want to add to that, John?
Nope. It's bold.
All right, other questions? All right, let's do sort of like final verdict. Any questions, thoughts, or just like things that you would want before the next discussion? Scott?
Not my top five.
Not your top five? Okay, Ailey?
It's fine, it's important in terms of.
On this one, on readiness?
Number three.
Okay, don't tell me you're going to be the champion for this, too.
No, no.
Scott, could you elaborate just a little more? I'm curious. What? Could you elaborate just a little more on, on why, you know, like.
Ooh, geez, Roger.
If, oh, okay, and, and yet, district's going to be doing stuff anyway.
Thank you.
I'm all, I'm kind of all in on page eight, page five, like, putting, putting chips in there. That if we go from whatever our proficiency is in third grade reading and improve it four percentage points in the next five years, and that might be like a really good result, it's like, okay. But that downstream and middle school, we're still dealing with a lot of kids who aren't proficient readings. If we can move way more chips in and, and get a way better result.
I mean.
Then I'm, I'm, I'm promoting this upstream this week.
You could argue that one and two are subsets of three, different cohorts of kids.
My theory changes that if we, if we really do well on one and two, then I'm sure you will.
It's got to be a pretty, pretty strong correlation. It must be.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, I.
Are we going down the road or?
Oh, okay.
Roger actually just had a very compassionate interjection, which is that just about everybody in this room needs to be back here tomorrow at seven thirty. So I want to conclude by nine thirty, which is in twenty-four minutes. So.
Okay, so I'm going to be more, a little bit more tight in sort of like asking you to go down the road. So Ailey?
I think readiness for high school is important. I just don't think this metric is compelling. I do think that it's important, but I think we're addressing it, like Scott says, in those earlier grades, and we'll get there eventually. So I just wrote math on this, like, if we agree to it, I'm down. But it's not the thing that I'm like, yes, this like is life-changing for this year.
Okay, Julia?
It's on my top three, because I believe that kids start dropping out mentally when they see their peers moving on, and even though they're in high school, they can't do their work. And it just takes a few more years to realize, like, they're not going to graduate. So to me, this is like, this is the best framework to high school graduation.
Okay.
Amy? I'm sort of convinced by looking at one and two as a subset of three, even though it's, you know, not contemporaneous. But I'm also, so I could, I could get rid of it, but I'm also feel really strongly that engagement in those middle grades is just critically important. And it's one of our, it's one of our weakest spots right now. And so I, I'm reluctant to let go of something that focuses on those middle grades, but I'm not sure that this is exactly what I want to capture there. And I almost wonder whether sense of belonging and this social emotional indicator might be something that we want to just situate in middle, middle school, because that is really important for how kids arrive at high school. So that might be something to think about.
Okay, Michelle?
I like it as a goal. It's definitely not my favorite. But I graduated from MLC, and so you could show proficiency for anything by, you know, doing an interpretive dance or writing a poem.
Well, that may need to come out of the board here.
You know. But I, I do like it, because I think, you know, what you said, Julia, is that it, it, it keeps you engaged to high school. And if you have a kid that's struggling in middle school and in high school, I mean, to get kids ready for, to be successful in high school, it's important.
Capture them before they drop out.
I know.
Yeah.
So I get nervous whenever we talk about readiness, because nobody defines what readiness means. And, and it's typically defined in terms of academic. Test scores, test scores, that's for some. And that just makes me really nervous, because there are many, many things. You can do great test scores and not be ready in any way in high school. Or you could do, you know, or, or not. Not my favorite. I, I'm, I'm kind of, I, I'm, I'm below that.
Just below that, okay. Andrew?
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't have any issues with, but I actually found this to be really provocative going down the line. I, I, I hadn't thought about how, how it is, it is correlated to, to goals one and two. So theoretically, if we're making progress in three years in goals one and two, then when those kids hit eighth grade, they will make progress there, too. Which then makes me wonder if Julia's point about what, what is, but, but a middle school goal is important. So, so is there a middle school goal that's less correlated to one and two that also measures high school readiness? That gets at some of the more emotional, social stuff that seems to happen in middle school?
Maybe throws in CTE and engagement. Fan.
So we have one more goal to discuss. Let's go to goal number four. Any clarifying questions for goal number four? This is the college and career. Clarifying questions?
So I submit a reason, yes. Like, what evidence do we have? And it's not, it's not an antagonistic question, it's just, what's the evidence that that's college and career readiness? Like, is it aligned to standards or just what it is? And why is it better than some other measurements that have been used in the past, like college preparatory classes, which could be across our high schools AP, IB, and dual credit, which has been, I think, a more acceptance standard? So it's a question, it's not, I don't have knowledge in that category.
Other questions?
I think someone said in the presentation, how many kids take the PSAC?
All of them.
So it is, okay, I thought, I thought somebody said eighty-five.
So eighty-five, it's available to all 10th graders. The last three years it's had a, during school day.
But eighty-five percent take it?
Correct.
So is there an issue with the metric? Are the kids who are taking it opting out? Are they less college and career ready? Because if there's, if there's a, if there's a sampling issue there, then the metric is going to be.
Probably for subgroups of students. We might have some students with special needs who aren't taking it. And this is what we need to investigate, because it could skew, you know, who's college and career ready? If precisely the kids we're trying to help out are being measured.
Is it an opt-out sort of thing? Like. Or you just don't show up, or what's the?
How do you opt out?
Both, maybe you're absent that day.
But it's not like a sign, opt-out, sign thing.
No, because the state.
Parents don't even hardly know when.
State of Oregon pays for every 10th grader to take it. So we offer it during the day, so. So I think that there could be a lot of reasons.
People could be self, kids could be self-selecting. So, you know.
I guess, and I'll just move into the comment phase.
Oh, hold on one second. Let's just see, are there any other questions? If you don't mind, any other questions about this one? Okay, move into the comment phase.
No, I would, I would, well, now, now I've sort of gotten, no, I mean, I think it gets back to Julia's point that I would, I would like to know what the evidence is that, that this shows kids are college and career ready? I have no idea whether it is or not. I, I, I would think of this as sort of an achievement score, but, but maybe, I don't know, you know, and does that mean that a kid is career-ready on graduation to high school? If they've achieved those, those, you said four hundred.
So to be honest, we actually looked for something tangible and measurable. And this had the highest rate of a common assessment across the district. So we didn't, for this exercise, look at the validity.
So this is sort of getting back.
This is, what do we offer across all of our high schools in common that the most students have access to?
Which is really, yeah, that's, that's important.
Probably landed on PSAT.
But it's getting back to our new initial conversation, two or three meetings ago, that we might want data that's not available. And so our question may be, do we want to invest, you know, a lot of money in developing that data? Or just use what we have, which is imperfect.
And maybe it's not an assessment. Maybe it's, how many CTE courses did you take, or dual credit, or.
Right, maybe it's reexamining our graduation requirements, or what that means.
So it also might be useful to recirculate the letter that was written to parents about the shift from ACT to SAT, because I think it showed a more integrated approach. And so I initially, when I got the draft, I was like, that's the test that like is, you know, doesn't disadvantage certain groups, but they changed it. And I think it would be worthwhile, I had a lot of perceptions about the SAT based on how they used to operate. So, and then we're also having some sort, there's also access to classes, and so I think it would be.
It's true that College Board has revised the SAT. It's also made more equitable, these parts made available, et cetera. I mean, we have every household principle in support of that change.
All right, Rita, final thoughts about this goal?
I still have the same question about, I don't know what we mean by readiness. Because, I mean, lots of anecdotes about kids allegedly being, I mean, they may be ready for college, but are they ready for post-college? The answer is no. Are kids who finish college in four years in many circles the exception now, not the rule? And most of the reason is, but most of the reason is social emotion. It's not academic.
Money.
A lot of it's money, a lot of it's, but, I, I mean, I just, I don't know. I mean, I think the whole college and career ready thing has been, has been narrowed into this, what is testable, and there you go. So, yeah, a little bit of, a little bit of creativity would be the thing.
Um, Shaw?
I'm not a huge fan of the PSAT or the SAT tests. I also don't know a lot about them, but I don't think that's a great or full measure. I think that I'd like to see other measures developed to decide whether, whether students are college and career ready, besides the SAT, for the reasons that we've already talked about today.
Okay, Amy?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm kind of hearing Aurora say that, that sounded like what we were looking for were pretty clear assessments and things that can be easily measured. But I'd like to throw it back to your shop and say, exercise a little creativity here, because this is what you guys do all day, every day. And give us some ideas about other ways we might get to. because this is what you guys do all day, every day, and give us some ideas about other ways we might get to these same concerns and inquiries.
Julia, anything else?
Yeah, so I mean, I'm gonna go back to how Andrew asked me the first question, which was like, do I agree with the goal? So I agree with the goal. I do think you can measure for like college and career and life readiness. It's just, I don't know whether it's the PSA, SAT, and I guess it would be, Amy is like, there, is there something else that like, hey, this would be better, we have this in his hand because the state pays for it and stuff? But, um, is it really the best way to measure whether our graduates are, I mean, part of, part of the problem, I think, is our diploma requirements and the state are not high. And so, um, you have to look at other measures, and is this the right, maybe that, maybe there's something else.
Amy?
I'd really like to see this goal be about leadership, rather than testing an academic knowledge, that it was about how are our students prepared to go out and lead? And I was being, uh, trying to jump in there, Danny, when you were trying to have us be a little more controlled about what it says on page two. But if we go back to this as sort of the basis of, of the distillation of the graduate portrait, it does say that they'll be prepared to lead a more socially just world. And I think we, we hit some of that compassion and that sense of belonging piece, or the critical thinker piece. Um, and that leadership piece, I think, is, is for me really missing from these goals. And I'd like to see that be how we define college and career ready, rather than the SAT.
Okay, hold on to that.
I don't know how we measure that, but.
Hold on to that, because that's gonna be your ticket out of here, is to do some breaking around, some of, something like that. Scott, uh, final thoughts?
I don't see critical thinking measured in colleges so far. Not much different from what everybody else has said.
Okay. So, uh, so, um, everyone in the audience is gonna give me a marker basis, so I'm just.
Ten minutes, you have ten minutes.
One, one, wait, wait, wait a minute.
Oh, sorry.
I think, um, this indicator would need multiple measures. Because there's so many careers out there that do not require second-year algebra, that you can be perfectly ready for, and, you know, for the PSAT and so what.
So thank you so much for your feedback on going through that. So before we leave, I wanna ask you one more question, and that'll be the ticket out of here. And I'm only looking at you now, there's people behind you. So if you could, uh, remember, like, gravity is a sign of leadership. So the, uh, so for next time, uh, I think we have some good information to come back to you with, some more conversations. What I'd like you to do, your ticket out of here, everyone's ticket out of here, is if you don't mind, is you think about, uh, these goals, and some of you have mentioned what might be missing. So we've heard about critical thinking, leadership, maybe something in the oral learning arena. What I want you to do is to tell us, like, what's the, what's the sort of goal area that you, you might, that you think might be missing? That's the first piece, part of it. The second part is, and if we were to add something like that, what goal would you sort of trade that in for? Okay?
Could I go first? Do I get a say?
Yeah. Yes, but does everyone understand the question?
Yes, that'd be in toward ten minutes.
Yeah. Ooh, I know.
It's actually, that's, that's actually okay, because that.
You're also gonna have a, a opportunity for public testimony at the end.
Okay.
I, I just wanna throw this trial balloon out, and just give her whatever. What if we reduce to three goals? Grade three literacy, grade five math, and a grade eight graduate portrait that's gonna connect to all our middle school redesigning? That ties to leadership, the sense of belonging, the sense of agency, everything that we know is gonna prepare one for the high school experience. It's gonna be there.
The mini graduate portrait?
Yes. For eighth grade. So for six, seven, and eight. We, we would, we would be creative about how, how we assess for that, how we measure that. More, more than likely would be a grade eight portfolio presentation, where, remember Scott's story about how fits demonstrate agency and leadership? Like, how did we capture that so that it would be true for every middle schooler before they transitioned to high school?
So getting this down to three, that Guadalupe did a great job of trading one, trading several in and adding a new one. Okay, who wants, what should, we, so we, should we start? Scott, it seems like we wanna start here.
So, uh, so I'm, I'm pretty much down with that, with, the one other piece I'm looking for is writing. And that's, that's my sort of proxy for critical thinking. And, and maybe it's writing oral presentation, I don't know. Because, yeah, whatever bundle that skill is, that's, that's gotta be in there somewhere. That's, that's, that's the taking and doing something with it, or at least the first step to find.
Okay, and so that would mean?
That directly ties into both band and leadership.
Okay. And I'm doing, um, I'm doing some.
I'm waiting here.
So, uh, so that means that you agree with, uh, the college and career and the ready for hi, the ready for high school sort of like.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Amy?
Awesome. So I think we're missing the leadership piece. I'm trying to grasp what Guadalupe said, and critique it, and affirm it, all those things. So I would agree with that, except I would still say a five. Switch the high school readiness for the miniature profile. Do college and career ready to still be a leadership thing, and then keep sense of belonging. I think part of that is if we come out with three goals that are elementary and then eighth grade, my daughter, who's a high school student, all of my mom friends will be like, but what about my kids? So how do we still say college and career readiness is on our radar? And what does that look like?
Graduation rates.
Great.
Great job. All right, Julia?
So I guess I would like to see what it looks like before I'm ready to do any trading. But if I, uh, absent that, if I was just gonna have these goals right here, I would, um, swish sense of belonging into maybe the eighth grade, so you have something there. And a, um, goal that I'm interested in is around ELLs, which is actually a little appropriate. Because there's lots of data that shows that we, ELLs exist based on the ELPH.
Elpa?
Was it?
Elpa.
So if you use that as the measure, that those students, um, actually, their money is accelerated, they conform way better. So I would be interested in a very specific focused measurement for ELLs.
Amy?
Um, I like the idea of holistic middle school indicators. I think that's really important. So, um, like I said before, I would be happy to put the social emotional portion into something in middle school, but I'd like to see it also have, you know, career exploration in those type of experiences in there. And then, um, I would like to keep some kind of an indicator for college and career ready, but that's back to, to us, well, back to Aurora and saying, what might be a little bit more creative way to, um, measure that?
Okay.
That would be the, uh.
All right. Michelle?
I'd be good with three goals. I also really like the idea of a portfolio-based learning outcome. I also think that the leadership could be rolled into that portfolio, that you could demonstrate that you had a community service project, for instance, where you were able to demonstrate some leadership qualities. And I think leadership can be taught early on. And I think also the social emotional is really important, but it's, it's important in, um, in high school, but it's really important in, in middle school. I think it's good to develop those skills, so yeah. Sorry, I'm going on, you're only gonna call. I'm tired.
You're great, thank you. Rita?
I, I wanna see that middle school. I wanna see that.
It's had in his back pocket through this whole conversation.
Just stumbling on.
Just, just waiting to pull it out.
Anything, uh, make any adjustments or errors?
Depending on what it is, I, I'm persuaded.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, no, I'm in the same place. I'm curious, I think it's a complicated goal, but if you can throw it off, that'd be interesting. My only question might be keeping sense of belonging, even though that would be included in that, just because it might differ a lot between younger and older grades, and that might tell us something, but I'm not necessarily set on that. And we're gonna be trying to graduation rates and reporting in a public way, they're gonna be in the press, so. That may be actually a reason to include them, because if they're not on our goals, then we may just be generating an article that says, why are they not focused on graduation rates after that's been such a focus? And we are. And so maybe that's a reason just to throw it on there, so.
Okay. With a minute to spare, great job. So I'm gonna turn it back, so, um, just, oh, yes?
We've got another minute?
Oh, uh, just in time. So what we'll do is we'll kind of come back with some more information, continue to have the dialogue. If you need any information in the meantime, you know where we all work, so.
Well, we'll be here all week.
We'll be here all week.
Starting at seven AM.
Have this work. Amy, could we all turn back over to Amy? Because you, uh, I thought you all did so great. Thank you so much for, for doing this and for hanging in.
And thank you, Danny, and everyone. I thought this was a really good, open discussion, and I thought we made a lot of progress. And so next week, um, this won't be Quantum Leap's where we start, but it'll be just a little more refinement for the next, um, round of discussion. So thank you, everyone, and we have some public, uh, comments testimony that we see.
I think we, the board has kind of painted themselves in a corner by the way we've closed our goals, by making sure that everything is measurable, data, and so forth. And it's, and basing it on outcomes. I'd say I have four different goals, and one is that we need to lay the foundation, which has never been laid in the school district for thirty years, which is every school should have, KH should have equal programs, period. Should be equal across, I don't care how many kids you have in your school, it should be equal. Gives everybody a chance, that would stop these poor schools from the downward spiral that they have. Second thing is that that would also allow you to do the second extremely important thing, which is to have your special programs be equitable, that would mean all the children get all the help that you can afford to give them. Which is not the case now, now, and depends a lot what school you're in, and so forth and so forth. And the third thing is to get the engagement going in the middle school, because the last two goals, the last two things I have to say are, engagement is one of the major dropout problems that you have. It's in the middle school, dropping out starts in the middle school for huge, huge numbers of kids. And we do a really bad job compared to all sorts of other schools around in the state of Oregon and Washington, of engaging kids, athletics and music and all those things that make kids wanna come to school. And the, and the final thing is that the third grade reading goal you have is all messed up. And it's, it's, it's not really worth, what you, there's, what you need to look at really first is these children who are way behind in reading. Right now, we're doing a terrible job of them. It's not, I mean, they're just way behind, two, three grades behind, all the way through, maybe fifth grade, eighth grade. They're way, way behind. That's where your reading goal should be. The goal that you're looking at in third grade reading, where you're increasing the number of kids who can read and make benchmarks? That is, actually, at the best, it's not very worthwhile, because you focus on the bubble kids, which are the kids right below. That becomes the focus of that, because you go from forty-seven to fifty-three or whatever. And that's the bubble kids, and you get that, and principals and schools will mess with that. And you end up, then you'll raise it up, all right, but those children who are way behind, they won't get caught up. And the, and the second thing is, that's kind of a, that's at the best. At the worst, it's kind of a racist goal. It's racist in that you have all these children who are way behind, but we're gonna focus on the kids in the bubble. And the kids who are way behind, as you see, many of them are kids of color, poor kids, and so forth and so forth. And so that's where you should be looking at for your goal. Thank you for letting me have that time.
Thank you for standing through this.
All right, we are here, so thank you, everyone.